We'll wait for the. Okay, we would like to open Mahoning County Commissioners Meeting Number 13, Lucky 13, up today, Thursday, April the 6th. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lauren, it's always nice when you come because you've got that little bundle of joy. Bridgette, she's a doll baby.
Hopefully she behaves.
Oh, come on. You know what? Every time my wife and I go to church and we're sitting there and we hear a kid crying or running down the aisle, you know, it always brings a smile to our face because, you know, it's good to see children and coming to church and crying and hollering and, you know, just being kids, you know, that's what it's all about. So. So Lauren, would it be?
Lauren, you just got a new baby, sir. When do you want them?
Too funny.
There's what, four?
You know, we'd be great grandparents, you know, so we would spoil them and send them home, you know.
That's normal.
I see Joe shaking his head. I'm sure that that's what he does, huh?
Sugar them up and say, oh my God, you were just as good as ever. Bye.
So Lauren.
Kiss and hug and.
Lauren, would you rather do it at the beginning or the end of the business portion? We're at your beck and call if you know.
Uh, I'll go beginning so that.
That way, yeah.
See how long she lasts.
Okay. All right, well, you know what? We'll start off with public comments and see if there's any public comments first and then we'll go to review from you. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we would ask Lauren McNally, our state representative, that is gracious enough to come and give us updates, to come talk to us a little bit about what's going on. We've asked Senator Rulie, Representative Katrona, and Representative McNally to come out and tell us what they're voting on, what they're proposing, what is new going on and happening, and how it positively impacts the residents of Mahoning County. Because that's what we as a board do on a daily basis, look for opportunities to make the health, safety, and welfare better for the residents we represent. And we think that the state legislature needs to do the same thing, so we want to get updated. So we thank you for being here.
Thank you. There's obviously way more information than I could ever give you that you would want to hear, you know? So happy to talk questions on things that maybe I didn't choose today to talk about, but we can talk about. Some of the things I wanted to point out, there's not a handful of bills that'll really affect you guys that are being heard in committee right now that I think is important for you guys to keep a pulse on. The first one is really a top priority bill from the House Republicans to flatten the state income tax. And it would essentially slash $1.2 billion from local governments. And it will have a very slight tax cut on the middle class, but obviously a much bigger savings for those in the wealthier categories specifically. If you're making kind of $26,000, $46,000, your income tax will only be cut by .54%. That's it. But if you're above that $115,000, you'll have a 31% income tax. So, and if you're making half a million dollars a year, you'll get a $5,000 income tax cut. So they want to flatten it so everybody pays about 2.75% in the income tax. But when doing that, it's going to take away all of your local government funds and you're going to have to put levies on for everything, your parks, your roads, your schools, your streets. It's going to take, like I said, $1.2 billion a year in state property rollbacks, and this is the money that goes to you guys. And so it's going to affect the libraries, the park districts, the counties, you're going to, you know, your older Ohioan tax exemptions, your military veterans' tax exemptions. So that's something you guys really need to keep your eye on. It's moving its way.
Which bill? Does this have a number yet, or?
It does have a number, and I did not put the number on here, but it's, um, I think it's House Bill 1. House Bill 1, yeah. Okay. So you definitely need to keep your eye on that one.
What genius sponsored that?
It's from the Republican side. It has a, I'm pretty sure it has a corresponding piece on the Senate as well. So, uh, the consensus, the behind the scenes conversation is they've dug themselves pretty deep into it, so there's going to have to be some type of, they're going to go through with something, whether it looks as deep as what the bill is written as now. We're obviously trying to fight against that, but something will probably happen.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the floor, when you're on the floor with these bills, you're able to make a comment from as a legislator, is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh my God, I'd be like crazy.
Um, it is.
I mean, I would definitely, with the press there, can make points, what are they thinking? You can't keep taxes, you can't.
Who's going to write it with the press there? Who's going to write?
Well, it's all on, so the other thing is, all of our stuff is on the Ohio Channel. So you can go to theOhioChannel.org, you can pull up any hearing, you can hear all of the questioning, you can pull up any floor session, you can hear all of the statements made. This has had, this has started the committee process, so you can, you know, follow it through there. Right now, it's not in one of my committees specifically, but it's definitely something that as a whole, the Democratic Caucus is fighting back against.
Karen, we had the largest corruption trial in the history of the state of Ohio with $60 million racketeering and crime, and it never even made the newspaper locally.
That is not true. I verified that after we talked for last.
I mean, not true. Not like it did everywhere else in Ohio.
And after you raised the complaint, my boss was hyper interested and was watching for it very carefully.
That's good. The people who are speaking out against this very much are the libraries, right? They're going to be detrimentally affected. The local governments, you guys can do proponent testimony or opponent testimony, you know, written or in person. The seniors, the military, everyone's going to, for a city like Youngstown who has no levies on the books, to go from that to have to put up a levy for literally everything is going to, it's really going to destroy the city.
It'll destroy Youngstown.
Yeah. So that's a big one. H, House Bill 11 is the expansion of the Ed Choice Scholarship Program, which is also being called the Backpack Bill. This bill essentially takes, as we all know in Youngstown, we have the Ed Choice Scholarship because it's a failing school district. And so if you go to school in, if you're in the city of Youngstown School District, the state will pay for you to go to any school you want, or pay that tuition. This will take that program and make it statewide. So you don't, now you don't have to be in a failing school district, you can be anywhere you want and go to any school you want, and the state will pick up the tab. Couple problems with, the opponents are selling it as a pro-parent choice bill, right? Parents should get the choice to send their kids wherever they want to send them, et cetera. Problem with it is, one, it's going to cost us $1.4 billion a year. Where are we going to get the money? No one said. That's a lot. That's on top of what we're already spending in the public school sector, right? So it's an additional $1.4 billion a year. Second, there's no provisions in it to put oversight over any of the non-public schools, which means we won't be able to see if the private schools are teaching the kids properly, if they're making strides and they're where they should be from an academic standpoint. There's no provisions to prevent against discrimination. So those private schools can say, no, you know, your kid has autism, or your kid's on a speech therapy IEP, we're not taking them. They can do that now. So that kind of negates the parent's choice. Parents with kids who have any type of situation, they don't get the choice. So that is, there's a, you know, this is a big one. It's really setting up our state, it's starting to set up our state to dismantle the public schools.
Another way to privatize and support privatization in schools is get rid of public schools.
This is about them.
This is. And there's, you know, it's, obviously, it's worth noting, there are some House Representatives who own charter schools in their district.
Do they recuse themselves when they vote on this?
Probably not.
Oh, that's perfect.
But as we continue to go down the dismantling of the public school system, we have HB 12. This is the state school board dismantling. So they want to, you know, right now we have a state school board, there's like 18 members of it. About half are appointed by the governor, the other half are elected throughout the district, throughout the state of Ohio. So they represent various districts. They want to completely dismantle it, create it as an agency under the governor, so essentially giving the governor full control like he would have over any other type of agency in the state.
Wow.
Problems with this, you're going to lose your local voice, you just are. And that's what, you know, also, the proponents are saying the state school board is dysfunctional. It's too big, there's, they can't make decisions, et cetera. And the other argument is, or the other part of this bill creates a career portion, a career-focused portion, so career tech, part of the agency. So creates a whole new agency that is education and career tech. So when we heard testimony on proponents for this bill, not one was from the education system. Everyone was from the business sector. So really created the question of like, is business driving education, or is academics driving education? And which way do you want to go with that? And if you just go off the proponent testimony that was heard, it's business driving our academics here and.
It's money.
It will. It's a bill to watch. It's also a priority bill. We've seen locally what, Youngstown's been under state control, right? Or what? Ten years now? We're still no better off. Some would argue we're worse off. The recent news articles would say there was a lot of money mismanagement by the person put in charge from the state. So we're a good example of why it's not necessarily good to give the state full authority and control over the education system. SB 30, this is now in the House, passed through the Senate so fast that nobody even noticed. This rolls back child labor laws. It allows 14 and 15-year-olds to work until 9:00 PM on school nights. This is against what the federal child labor laws are, so it's in direct conflict with federal child labor laws, which opens up a whole can of worms for litigation. It, again, has business at the core. The proponents say, well, this is going to solve our workforce shortage. Well, opponents say, why are children the solution to our workforce shortage? Why are children a commodity, not a child? Questions about mental health around the kids, safety around the kids, be, around the jobs that they're doing, being at such a young age. Who is going to be held accountable if these, the 9:00 PM curfew is broken? What about transportation? We're not, you know, we're cutting public transportation, so how are these kids getting? They don't drive, so we're not really solving the problem because they can't get to work anyway if they're 14. So any, there's no, there's been no study saying those hours of 7:00 to 9:00, because right now it's a 7:00 PM cutoff, 7:00 to 9:00 are the hours that we need to fix, that we have the workforce shortage. No one said that. No one's also said that the jobs available, that we're having workforce shortage between 7:00 and 9:00, are ones that kids can do. Kids that are in eighth grade, you can be in eighth grade at 14. So this is, you know, another, we haven't heard opponent testimony on again, but again, like, the AFL-CIO, we've reached out to, they've said they're against it. We're reaching out to the mental health experts, the pediatricians. Superintendents have to sign off on allowing them. That opens up litigation for that superintendent's because, again, it's against federal law.
Can I ask a question? Who sponsored this bill? Could you get me that?
I can, yeah.
Because I got a feeling I know two people that are for this.
Yeah, so it passed the Senate, so the Senate voted and passed it.
I know, that's, I want to know, if there's a breakdown in that, I'd like to see that.
Yep, I can text that to you.
Good. Because that's craziness. Going to put a kid in a kitchen at a bar to wash dishes?
Yeah. Again, the proponent testimony was all business-related, nothing about the kids. It was nothing about the kids. A couple other ones, so for your police departments, a couple ones to watch out for is HB 51, the Gun Expansion Act. This prevents Ohio from enforcing federal firearm laws. It prevents local and federal law enforcement agencies from cooperating on matters related to firearms. It legalizes attachments designed to make firearms more deadly and concealable. And it would allow anyone barred in another state who, from buying a gun due to like some type of legal disability over there, to come to Ohio and buy their gun here. No questions asked. It also removes the requirement that a person in a school safety zone has to be in accordance with federal firearm laws. So again, complete contradiction with federal firearm laws, so we're going to end up in a lot of litigation.
What is it they say? Power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely.
So, so the proponent argument, obviously, there's a lot, but if I'm breaking it down to, there is a money issue, because right now, you know, if the federal government gets involved in anything we're doing locally, they get to take the stuff, the money, the drugs, the money confiscated, anything like that. It'll keep that money here locally, but we'll never be able to work with federal law enforcement officers in any capacity if we pass this.
Are they opening the state up for anything that comes?
Yes.
Lauren, is the Sheriff's Association speaking, or the police organizations for or against this?
So we haven't had opponent testimony yet, but everyone that we've sort of been reaching out to have all been against this bill in the, that we've talked to on the police side. The other bill also affecting them is one about 18-year-olds being able to be armed police officers. Again, the argument is, we have a shortage of police officers. From our conversations with the law enforcement entities, they're very scared to have an 18-year-old as an armed police officer without the way that this bill is written that would allow them right in. So those are two bills that you need to make sure that your police departments know about.
51 and what's the?
51, and I don't have the other one on here. I'll text you the House bill number. It's a House bill number.
I can't believe it.
That's, yeah.
I mean, what are they thinking when they go there?
I mean, again, it's business, that one's, the 18-year-old is business-related. Well, we have a shortage, so let's just, again, turn kids into commodities and make the kids solve our problems.
Who in the Senate?
Bridgette can wash dishes, right?
Who in the Senate and in the House would even attempt to look at something like that? Aren't they thinking of how, what about their kids? Really? You're going to put an 18-year-old with an assault rifle or whatever they use.
I know.
On the streets? Their judgment is good, but it's not that good yet because they're not mature enough, I don't think.
Yeah, exactly. That's what, as, so that bill isn't in one of my committees, but the, the one rolling back child labor laws is, and the one around dismantling the school systems is, and when I sat through those testimonies, I was, felt sick thinking about my kids in that manner. Like, you're talking about my kids as, not as kids, not as humans, and not as people we're supposed to be.
Subjects.
Exactly. And that was just like a gut feeling I had during the testimony, was just a personal visceral reaction to what the people who were talking about. Because in neither of those hearings were kids ever brought up as kids. They were brought up as talked about in terms of, what are these?
Oh my God, I'd love to talk to them and sound.
What is it they say, that after inception, they don't care about them? They only care about them at inception, not afterwards.
Which is, this is not our state. Something has to change here. It's not our state.
We were recently, there was recently a study done on kids going to college and distinctly choosing schools in states that were more favorable to their things socially, and Ohio was not one of those schools. We are, we are losing college applicants strictly because of these types of social programs we're putting into place. That is the problem with our workforce. People don't want to live here because of the social thing.
Exactly.
So for your courts, I've got two more here I'll mention. For your courts, HB 14, this is a parental rights bill. It mandates 50/50 parenting time as the starting point, and then increases the threshold of, the burden threshold to, to get more or less parenting time. So this is divorce court. There are more than 90 different groups who came out against this bill. This is, it was in the last General Assembly. It's back again. The, the overreaching theme is, yes, everybody agrees that both, what's best for the child is that both parents have as much interaction and much as part of the, as part of the child's life as possible. However, what this bill does and how it's written, it's very, very bad for anybody in a domestic violence situation because they can never meet the threshold of, the threshold for the burden of proof. And so it, it makes them extremely vulnerable, the way that this is currently written. Now, there are three versions of this bill that have been changed through the last two, three years. The one that's up now, though, the judges are against it, the lawyers are against it, the domestic violence advocates are against it. The proponents who spoke about it were people who just had had bad experiences in the courts. So there was just personal experiences versus, you know, which, which I'm sure happened. I'm sure there are definitely one-off situations, but no one's, in those situations, no one's at harm of physically dying. If the domestic violence scenarios happen, somebody loses their life if we don't protect those. So we have to change this bill. Again, the concept isn't bad. Nobody disagrees with the concept. The point being, yes, we want to make every effort we can to make sure that both parents are involved in the children's lives. We just have to make sure we're doing it in a way that protects anyone who might be vulnerable.
Did they ever, I mean, I don't know if they do this there, but if they checked it up before they put this bill up with somebody that's actually been in a domestic violence situation? When you look at that, the person that is the offender of that in a family situation masks that very well. So those that are affected would be maybe the wife and the kids who stay in because they're afraid to get out.
Right.
So do, are those the kind of people that maybe are testifying for this?
So the, the only people who are testifying for it so far have been people who just, they, I don't, I don't know if they have domestic violence, right? I don't know, they don't tell us that side of the story. They just say, we didn't get 50/50 custody. We didn't get fair share, and there was no necessary reason. And there are those stories out there. Those do happen. The problem is, in order for someone who's a victim of domestic violence to, to protect themselves and their children in these, in, under this bill, they'd have to, A, report it, which we know a good chunk of domestic violence cases don't even get reported, out of fear. B, they then have to have more than just a report proof to overcome the threshold. Doesn't outline exactly what does that look like? How much does that, how many pictures, doctor's appointments, whatever? How long is that going to take to get? That isn't outlined in the bill, but the threshold of proof. So those are the two big things that the, plus the opponents are also saying, look, in the majority of cases, we already do this. We are, we try to avoid going to court. We do this behind the scenes with the judges, with the mediators. We create these family plans. Part of the problem is there's no statewide standard, so every county is just, has their own sort of program around how they handle divorce.
No, what's the other bill with the courts?
That was the only one. That's the only one with the courts.
I thought there was two.
Yeah, that's the only one with the courts. There were two under the please. The last one, I know we just talked about the Affordable Housing, we just had an Affordable Housing meeting. This is actually my bill. It's an Affordable Housing Tax Credit for developers. It piggybacks off of the federal government's low-income housing tax credit. So if you apply for the federal government's low-income housing tax credit and get approved, you can then apply for the state's Affordable Housing Tax Credit, and then you can stack those and help build your capital stack to, to build housing developments around the state. There's about 14 other states that have this particular tax credit, so it makes us more competitive with those states to attract developers. But the bottom line is, it's going to help seniors to continue to age in place because around here, our houses are, most of our houses are pre-World War II, definitely, you know, pre-1960. So the homes aren't built for accessibility features and things like that. So this will allow seniors to have a place to move into where they can still age at home, but then it'll also free up their houses that they can no longer maintain, even, even electricity bills, right? The bigger your house, higher your electricity bill is. Move into some type of nice, and these are nice, high-rise apartment-type complexes. They are not voucher programs. This will not help the voucher programs. This will not help Section 8 in any way, shape, or form. You will still have to have an income, a significant income, you know, $40,000 to $80,000 a year to be able to rent one of these places. It is really for the middle class. It is for college kids coming out of college who can't afford to buy a home yet. It is for seniors who want to downgrade their spot, their space. It is for the middle class who, you know, are kind of, they're not, they're just, like, they're sort of stuck in the middle. And it will, the entire building, say, 10%, under this scenario, whole building will be market rate except for maybe 10%. 10% will be held for affordable housing. And when we do have an increase of workforce opportunities, big driver of this was the plant going in down in Columbus, also the plant coming out in Lordstown, and other opportunities, where are we going to house these people? They want nice new places to live. We don't have that available today. And so we need to kind of create these scenarios, and we need to do it before housing becomes, because we do actually have a housing shortage throughout the state. So before we hit that tipping point of where how, single-family homes actually becomes unattainable for people. So.
Lauren, I read an email that came to me the other day about, you know, we've seen so much with the legislature being basically controlled by the Republicans for almost 30 years, total control for almost 30 years. I think one four-year period where Strickland was governor was the only time and that we had a Democrat in in the last 28 or whatever. And, and right now, you know, when you say they have carte blanche, you know, so we're losing. so we're losing women's rights, we're losing voters' rights, we're losing uh, you know, workers' rights. Um, now, the seems like when the the workers fought back on Senate Bill Five, you know, so our first responders had the ability to negotiate or or to to negotiate their own contracts and to protect themselves, whether it be police, firemen, uh first responders, uh on Senate Bill Five. So now the approach is to put these in ours next to the judges' names so we can identify uh and take them out at the courts. Uh, now I see that there, you know, we had a constitutional amendment put on, change for Senate Bill Five. Now, they wanna take and say, not one vote, one person, and fifty-one percent. They want to say, to make a constitutional change, you have to have sixty percent of the vote. So I saw that on uh on on an email that came to me and uh I'm not sure if this is what's going on in the Senate um because it had our local senator, you know, attached to it, so I I I haven't verified any of that.
I can talk about that for a little bit.
Yeah.
Tell you what's going on. Uh, before I dive into that, I do wanna say that House bill from the last GA takes effect tomorrow and that's the voter ID. You have to have um a valid driver's license now to vote. They won't accept anything else.
Well, how about if you don't need ID?
They will start issuing free state IDs, not until like next week though.
So no lexic bill, no credit card?
Nothing.
And you know what, who's that hurt?
And that starts tomorrow.
Absentee.
Seniors.
And seniors.
Seniors, military.
Yep.
Yep. So uh, that's really important. That takes effect tomorrow. Um, so if you're going to vote, you will not need anything if you're voting absentee. Same, that'll will look the same. So vote absentee, so you avoid everything.
That makes sense.
I'd like to say that.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I think they're crazy. Who the hell did that?
Hi, Bridget.
That was the last general assembly, so you know.
I can just guess.
Yeah. So um, uh, I just wanna make sure people know because we are in voting season now, again, for the primaries. So, but on this constitutional change, there is a proposal to um um change the way we amend the constitution. So the state constitution right now, you need forty, you need um three percent of, you you need to get petitions for three percent of the gubernatorial, the last gubernatorial race from forty-four counties. And a fifty percent plus one majority changes that, the constitution, if you wanna put up a ballot initiative. The new proposal, um it's a resolution and it is, I believe, HJR one. So it's a ha, it's a joint resolution between the House and the Senate. And it will require that signatures come from all eighty-eight counties and you need fifty, you need five percent gubernatorial race signatures. And it also eliminates this, what they call a cure period. So basically, you get a period of time where if you don't meet the threshold of the three percent and forty-four, how it is now, you get a little bit of period of grace period to go back and get more. They're eliminating that, so there's no second chance to continue to get signatures. And it creates a safe harbor. Um, so it eliminates the opportunity for state legislatures to um change that ballot initiative. Say you put a ballot initiative on, it passes. State legislators can't touch it, but only for one year. It really, proponents, they really need to put a safeguard in there for at least three up to ten, um where the state legislature cannot go back and reverse whatever ballot initiative just passed. Um, one year's not a long time. Um, the only arguments for this have really been about eliminating out-of-state special interest groups from influencing influencing our elections with money. Um, and then the second argument is the document is sacred and should be hard-doomed. If you're following, ironically though, the only proponent testimony that has been heard so far has been from an out-of-state interest group. And the amendment actually does nothing to address the finance piece that they're arguing about. So it doesn't do anything to address the amount of money coming in to help about initiative get on. Um, and then unfortunately, if you're talking about this protecting the constitution argument, the author of the bill, who is the senator, uh he actually sent around a memo to our colleagues depicting it as a way to beat back future abortion rights and redistricting amendments. So it's very clear.
Who did this bill? Oh god, bring the names of the people next time.
I will, I will bring the names of the people.
And, yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Just bring the names of everybody that sponsored these stupid bills.
I will next time. Yeah, so.
Cause this is like.
So the the motive is very clear. They've made it very clear, even though they're trying to hide that motive. Um, also, they, you know, they wanna put this on the ballot in an August election. Three months ago, they literally just voted against August elections at the state. Where just, they didn't, they said, we're not, same people, we don't want August elections anymore. They cost too much. They have low voter turnout. All of a sudden, they want August elections, but only for this one specific thing. Three months ago.
Sure, cause low voter turnout helps.
Yeah, so it's eleven three months since, you know, they they passed, they passed the law to remove August elections. But hey, let's, let's put it back up. Um, so opponent or um.
Do these people in grade school up here?
Opponents though, it's it's really good to point out a couple of things about this because there are a lot of unintended consequences, right? Um, and ones that you guys are gonna be affected by. So, you know, in general, citizen-led ballot measures, they're not overused. We haven't had one since twenty eighteen and since nineteen ninety-eight, there's only been sixteen. And of those sixteen, only two would have passed at the sixty percent threshold. Every other one would have failed. Um, what are some of those things that would have failed? Bonds, gambling, smoker laws. Um, uh, the technology-based Third Frontier Economic Development Program. Um, bonds for environmental conservation that were passed in two thousand. Bonds for low-cost housing assistance that were uh passed in nineteen eighty-two and nineteen ninety. All of those would have failed. Um, so that is a really big unintended consequence since nineteen eighty. Only two-thirds of bond-related issues have passed under the fifty percent plus one super major, the majority requirement. All the rest, only eight of the eighteen would have passed in this new. So all the rest of the bonds, bond issues would have failed. Um, that's your parks, your recreation, your natural resources, school construction in nineteen ninety-nine would have failed. Um, so those are all the unintended consequences that are gonna happen if we actually move to sixty percent. So we take away the controversial pieces and just look at um how it's gonna affect us on a daily basis. Those are big deals. Uh, so we need to pay attention to that.
Can I ask a question? You're coming here to tell us about this. You know, regardless whether you are a D or an R, let's put it that way. Let's say you may be an R. This affects your district.
Right.
Don't those other people see that? That this is actually gonna affect their district?
Carol, what what have we been taught? I mean, when you go to Columbus, you have to put the rose-colored glasses on.
Yeah, but that's not the way, if we're electing you to be my representative, you better get there and do what I need for the people. You know what I'm saying?
Motives are a powerful thing and a lot of, these things going forward have motives that that behind the scenes are important to know about. Um, but that's, that's why I thought it was important to bring up the bond issue. That's not something controversial. That's not something that's Democrat, Republican, that's just affecting your parks.
And and the the same issue with the bonds. When the Trump tax bill passed, what, five, six years ago, the unintended consequences is no early calls by the bonds that county government has. And that year that it passed, if we uh, i- if it would have taken effect the year it did, we would have lost three point seven million dollars from that one year. I forget what year it was, seventeen or whatever, sixteen. Um, so those are the unintended consequences. And uh we were told, well, they'll clean that up and rectify that problem so county government doesn't lose. And I asked Ralph Meacham every year if that's been cleaned up and uh, no, it's still in effect. So, you know, they don't, they don't accumulate and assess how much we've lost each year or potentially lost each year, um, you know, since it was, we were a casualty of the unintended consequences. Maybe it was unintended, I don't know.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Cause it, cause it made the bond companies more money.
And every time a bill is written, there is a fiscal note assigned to it and there's an unintended consequences um portion of the bill uh created by the Legislative Commission, which is a nonpartisan commission that does all of our research and a lot of our legal writing and things like that. And so if you ever want a financial analysis on any of this stuff or no sort of deep deeper dive on what's gonna happen, um, what does it mean? It, the information's there, so they have it. It's interesting to read it, I guess. Uh, I can come back next time and talk about budget stuff because we're almost to the end of, the House is almost done with our budget. We'll pass it off to the Senate. The Senator probably got it, likely did with the transportation budget. We'll have to come back um and go in conference committee with it. But there are a lot of, um, there's a lot of good opportunities in the in the governor's proposed budget. Honestly, it's it's actually a pretty good budget. And so a a lot of the proponent testimony, a lot of the testimony we've heard in general has just been, please don't touch anything that the governor did. Don't cut anything. We like it, et cetera. Um, there are definitely opportunities for improvement in Health and Human Services Subcommittee, which I'm on. You know, we've, we've, we have over two hundred amendments to make improvements that we've heard from and are um discussing to put forth. So there's definitely still room to grow on that, but a lot of work goes into that budget. And um I can update next month on that.
How's the mental health piece to that? Are they funding that at a greater amount?
Yeah, everything is being funded at a higher level um across Medicaid reimbursement rates, across everything. Um, the Disabilities Department, Minority Health Department, um Public Health Department. Everything in that space is navigators to help um with SNAP. Actually, there's an amendment that we're putting forth to um increase SNAP or the state amounts that we put into SNAP as well for seniors. Um, so there, there's, there's gonna be a lot of money spent, but the thing is, we have the money to spend.
Yes.
We have the money to spend. Um, our rainy day fund is actually almost at its half-legal amount that you're allowed to keep in it. And the interest alone on that is where we can fund a lot of this stuff from.
Kinda kidding.
What's the three billion?
Yeah.
God. What's the cap?
Three billion.
Yeah, pretty much.
Is it three billion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't know the cap.
It's, we're pretty much at it. And so that interest that it's earning can't uh, it can't stay. We have to use it, which there are a lot of things to use.
Okay, we we gotta, we're losing people.
Yeah.
So we uh, we need to get through the business portion, but we really thank you for coming and giving us.
Excellent.
We, you know, we appreciate knowing what's going on before it happens, you know, and anticipating. We, you know, we say as a board on a regular basis, and I can tell you, local government, you know, whether you're a township trustee, a village, you know, a city councilor, as yourself, for so long, you know, there's no Ds and Rs. There are people trying to make a living, trying to survive. You know, unfortunately, at the state and federal level, you know, they play politics with the lives of the people in local government and they they don't see the impact or or they they don't care about the impact, one or the other. So, um, you know, we're, we're the front line. We're the ones that that people come to to try and resolve their issues and and you end up dumping it back on local government and then you get fed up, you know, you you've, you're taxed off, I don't know, so.
I'll leave you on a positive note. There are three um statewide awards that if you have anybody locally you wanna nominate for. One is um Senior Citizen of the Year Award. Uh, one is that um the military, um, and I'll email these to you. The military, uh, one and, I forget the third one. I forget the third one. I'm gonna email them to you, but they're good opportunities to highlight some of our local residents on a state level. Um, which I think is just cool. Just brings, no, so, okay.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And we appreciate Bridget hanging tough. Yep.
Bridget Dunn?
Is there time for one question on that or time?
Well, go ahead. You can go talk to her outside. You know, we we need to get to the business portion, so. Okay, we'll move on. I apologize uh for, you know, being tardy on this, but uh it was great information.
Yep.
Approval of previous minutes of board meeting number twelve, Thursday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and approval of bills for payment.
So move?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Legal notices, engineers.
Morning, everybody. This is a letter of interest for professional engineering services, engineering design, construction administration, construction inspection services from Mahoning Avenue Industrial Quarter.
Lead based.
This is a request for proposal for lead certification training.
Alrighty, thank you. Motion to approve legal notices.
Motion to approve legal notices, one and two.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Agreements, commissioners, OMB.
Commissioners, this is a consulting agreement with Edge City Holdings LLC for the Myers project technical support in the amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred, and this is general fund.
Thank you, Audrey. Facilities. Erica.
Right, commissioners. B is an agreement with Performance Contracting for backwater job installation and sewer lateral replacement located at Soil and Water Building in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Lead based.
This is an agreement with Howlin Company for lead hazard control, healthy homeless work at one oh five Greeley in the amount of ten thousand six ninety and twenty cents.
Thank you. Sanitary.
This is an agreement with SDT Inc. for emergency manhole replacement on Struthers Road in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and these are non-general funds.
Thank you. Agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, A through D.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Change orders, engineers, right.
Yes, A. This is a change order for property.
Okay, motion to approve change orders.
Motion to approve change orders, three A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Record of bids, sanitary. Erica.
This is the Camel wastewater treatment plant blower and diffuser replacement improvement number three, five thirty-five.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, record of bids, two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Bagety?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Resolutions, commissioners, OMB, Audrey.
Commissioners, item A is a resolution approving the agreement in expenditures with the following to assist COVID-nineteen public health and funded by the American Plan Act, Rescue Plan Act in the following amounts, Youngstown Lifeguard Academy for fifty thousand. Um, item B is a resolution to approve transfer funds from the general fund to the Dog Ward and Capital Project Fund in the amount of forty-three thousand four thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, thank you. Uh, item C uh is a resolution authorizing April twenty twenty-three as National County Government Month. Um, item D.
Do they bring us lunch? Is that what happens?
CCL did that.
County government? The CCAO brings us all lunch?
There's gonna be.
Sandwiches. Maybe Joe Iberus will bring us lunch.
Yeah, it's supposed to be give all the county employees a pat on the back and say, thank you for your service.
Yep.
Including our commissioners. Um, item D is a resolution authorizing the participation in a sublease, sublease purchase arrangement with Ohio Secretary of State for the purpose of acquiring and implementing voting machines, equipment, and financing certain costs thereof. A sublease purchase agreement evidence such arrangement in matters related thereto. And that's um using the final part of a grant that came through their bond issue through the state.
Okay, uh, EMA, OMB grants, did you? Okay, E M A, O M B grants, did you?
Anna.
Cause Anna, oh, there she is. Hi, Anna.
Good morning, commissioners, Audrey, Anthony. This is a resolution to support the Emergency Management Agency to apply for hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred dollars with a twenty percent match requirement that will be provided by the non-general hazard fund.
Thanks, Anna. Engineers.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving an agreement with M S Consultants for the Engineering Services for Market Bridge, Market Street Bridge Rehab Project in the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars, non-GAAP.
Jobs and Family.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Letter G, Job and Family Services, resolution is approving the unpaid leave of absence for one employee of the department. Thank you.
All right, Lead Based.
It's a moral obligation for payment of ten thousand nine hundred dollars to lead checks for additional lead hazard control, risk assessments, and inspections.
O M B Grants.
Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing the contribution of fifteen thousand dollars from the General Fund to O S U Extension to support Mahoning County four-H programming. And letter J is a resolution authorizing the contribution of ninety thousand dollars from the sanitary engineer sewer fund and two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the General Fund in a total amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to support O S U Extension.
All right, thank you. Sheriff, O M B, Joe.
Good morning, everyone. K is a resolution in support of an application we made to Ohio Office of Criminal Justice. It's for the twenty twenty-three recovery of file in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine twenty-three sixty-eight. Local match.
All right, resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, A through K.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Oregetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Okay, see, we buzzed through that pretty quick and got within our hour window. Anything for the good of the order, Anthony?
No, just thank Lauren for a wonderful update. All the things going on in Columbus, it's amazing. But other than that, I'm good.
Joe?
I just want to thank Lauren as well. It's great to have these updates once a month so we know what we need to do as a group of county commissioners and as our county to maybe help in some of these bills that we don't think are very good. Anyway, I want to wish everybody a very happy and blessed Easter. Just remember that this is a solemn weekend and with family and friends. So please enjoy yourself, but do worship as well and have a great holiday. Eat lots.
Thank you. Yeah, I too would echo you, Carol and Anthony's sentiments. Lauren, you know, she, she, you could tell she's on top of things. She does an amazing job. She's trying like heck to, you know, to represent the people that she represents. And, you know, it's frustrating, you know, obviously, you know, head left from the vindicator, but I like to give them a hard time for the, you know, I mean, they write snippets of articles. Like when I, when I give them a hard time about the householder case, you know, obviously they wrote some things, but it's very minute compared to the rest of the state. And the things that are, that are in conference, you know, people need to know what our representatives are proposing before it's voted on. Because these things take effect and then everybody's saying, how did that happen? Why did that happen? When did it happen? You know, whether it's for gas tax, you know, people still say to me is, you know, the gas tax isn't divided up amongst the most populous or the most roads or the most cars? Nope, eighty-eight ways, even, you know, and how did that happen? Well, it happens like this, you know, they go to Columbus and they vote. And then we deal with the repercussions. Then it trickles down to local government where we're all impacted as a people and as a community. We're impacted because now the roads aren't getting paved. This isn't happening, that isn't happening, they need a levy. You know, why do we need a levy? Well, because the states eliminate in this funding, that funding. You heard what you said. If they, if they do that, was it a billion dollars for local government, it's going to be lost. One point two billion is going to be lost on, on House Bill One if, if it passes. And the parks and the, you know, and all the things that we use. And then we have people coming in saying, you know, that's historic park, this is that, why can't we help? You know, and, and it gets dumped on the local government and we get upset because we're taxed off, you know, and, and because we have the ability to vote on everything proposed as a community, you know. And at the state level, they impose, we propose and we vote. You know, so that's where the difference needs to, to stop, you know, and to change. But, you know, God bless, you know, Carol, remind us and to why we're all here and what this week's all about. Good Friday, my wife takes me to Stations of the Cross down by you in the park. And it's a good time for us all to realize, you know, what it's all about on Easter Sunday and to make sure that we, you know, Audrey, why don't you, you know, you're, you're probably the most religious person I know. And you're probably one of the most dedicated people to, to most everything. I'm telling you, I, I, yeah, gifted. I, I don't even have a word to, to be able to correlate to you because you're such a good person with respect to those things. So, God bless you.
God bless you. I guess, I guess I would leave it with this then, as, since this is going to be, well, also government and recognition of recognizing government employees and, and, and the sacrifice that they do. Because sometimes you get beat up left and right. And sometimes it's deserved, sometimes it's not deserved, but you get beat up and you have to take it and you have to smile. And I look what comes this way. We had, we had the greatest sacrifice and the recognition of someone who gave all for those to serve all of us. And so with that being said, on Easter Day, he made that sacrifice and I thank you for your sacrifices. It's no matter how much you get beat up over it.
Amen. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Remedy Oregetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Next meeting is Thursday, April thirteenth, ten AM.